The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call the regular council meeting of May 13th to order. First of all, under Presentations, this evening we have none. Could I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda with, we want to amend it with the deletion of 2B because our concerned citizens couldn't make it this evening, and in their place, we'll add Michael Walker with Associated Engineering with an update. So could I have a motion for that, please? Thank you. Councillor Vroba, seconded by Councillor Clark, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes as presented? Thank you. Councillor Waliser, seconded by Councillor Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. And we'll also need a motion for the minutes of the special meeting held on May 8th, where we dealt with the petition. Thank you. Councillor Sernick, seconded by Councillor Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have Mr. Neil Fents from the Virtus Group to give us some information on the audited financial statement. Welcome, Neil.
Great, thanks for having me. So first speak to the Audit Completion Report. So that was, I believe, the first pit document in the package. So we did complete our audit this fall. We came on site for four days and completed the majority of our work there. And in general, the audit was a very smooth process, working with everybody at City Hall. We did complete our audit based on the proposed $1.2 million of materiality. We've discussed any findings with management, and there was nothing significant that affected our approval of the financial statements. During our work, we didn't identify any cases of fraud, error, illegal or possibly illegal acts. We also didn't, as I kind of mentioned, identify anything considered to be going against legislation, regulation, or any general laws. And overall, as I mentioned, we didn't find anything that would affect our ability to approve the financial statements. There were no significant issues, judgments, or other errors throughout our audit. And the only error that we did find was some rent fees that were recognized in 2022 that related to 2023.
You need to put your microphone there.
Sorry about that. It's a new process.
Your voice carried pretty good, but it's better now.
So we did find some rent fees that were charged in 2022 that should have been related to 2023. We discussed this with management, and it's already being addressed, and a new process is being put in place so that this shouldn't happen in the future. So no concerns there. It seemed to just be a one-time issue. As part of our audit, we also completed the mayor reporting, so that relates to the Canadian Community Building Fund. And we issued an unmodified opinion on those, on that report on March 20th, 2024. And throughout the audit, yeah, we didn't identify anything that was a concern. We appreciated the work with Trudy and the rest of the team here. Everything went well from our end. Did anybody have any questions on the Audit Completion Report at all at this time?
Okay, thank you, Neil. Any questions, comments, observations from members of council? Councillor Sernick?
Sorry, thank you, worship. Just seems to be a lot of variance, I guess, from 2022 to 2023, like expenses or revenue was down almost $4 million, and expenses were down almost like $7 or $8 million. Like, is that, and then we're at a $5.8 million surplus? Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, 2022 was quite high because it was a big year for the, I'm always gonna mess it up, but the Canadian Community Building Fund. There was a large surplus that had built up in that project, and a lot of it was used in 2022. So there were some bigger projects completed that year. That's why you see such a big surplus that year, because those projects end up going into the capital assets and get recognized over time through amortization. So that's why we kind of see that one-year blip with that. Otherwise, a lot of the variances were fairly expected and just related to different grants and programs that either didn't happen again, or kind of one-time things between the two years.
Works for me.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no more questions or comments, thank you very much, Neil, for that. Could we have a motion to accept the audited financial statements, please? Thank you. Councillor Waliser, seconded by Councillor Frank, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Thank you, Neil. You know you're welcome to stay, but most people leave. I do get it.
Well, I'll be back later.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, in a bit. Okay, thank you. Okay, please, Michael, step up to the mic and click the mic on. We're happy this evening to present Michael Walker with Associated Engineering. Thank you, Michael, for coming from Regina to give us a brief update now that we've started with the downtown.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, quick update. So we did have some success early May. We've started the project, as you can tell by looking outside of City Hall here. The project is progressing well. We have identified some contamination, which in multiple areas on the sites, we are dealing with that right now. We will have some more information for council shortly. The lab results are actually coming back tonight. We've put a rush on those just for the importance of it. So we'll be able to share some more information there. Otherwise, the contracts have all moved forward. We have done a two-part contract, so we've got all the civil undergrounds in the first part, and the second part, once those prices are coming back, we are going to be working towards that budget of the approved scope in the original project. So we will have to figure out how we fit that in and go from there. So.
Okay, thank you for that, Michael. And of course, we were all aware with the gas stations years ago, wherever they were, whenever you uncover that nowadays, you know, there's always a possibility of some contamination. So we'll open the floor to any questions or comments from members of council. Councillor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. Just, I guess, what they're doing out there now, they're stripping the pavement and going down a couple feet. Now, are they going to, they're actually going to dig down and start replacing sewer and water at first? Is that on the one block? Is that how it's going to go?
Yeah, correct. So we've started on the 1100 block, which the first task is to strip off the old asphalt, which can't really be reused. So we've, we're taking that off, stockpiling it, and then we're trying to reclaim as much of the aggregate, sorry, as much of the aggregate as we can for reuse, the stuff that isn't, doesn't have any contamination in it. So we are working on that. And then the other task that we've been doing is isolation. So there's a couple issues with existing isolation, not existing. So working with the city crews to add in new valves to make sure that the water gets isolated so that we don't lose pressurization or the water quality in the rest of the city.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead. Councillor Frank?
Sure, and thanks so much for coming tonight. Just, I know there's been, you've communicated really well with, like, a lot of the downtown businesses, put some question about sidewalks and things like that. So if you want to just give a little bit of an update on kind of the phasing out of this project, as much as you know at least this point anyways, to try to make sure everybody knows that we'll keep it open as best possible.
For sure. Yeah, thanks for the question. Yeah, so again, and you kind of alluded to it, it's the, the plans at the start were subject to change. You know, if we get some weather or something, then we can adjust accordingly. We do have a great contractor with ASL and then a couple of local subs being out there, so that, that's great. They know the, the area, and they're comfortable working with it. But the approach that they've taken is the 1100 block starting. So we're going to do the first, first block first, between 11th and 12th. And then they are leaving the sidewalks open right now. So if you drive by, you can see all the fencing up. So you can't get vehicular traffic, but you can still get to the stores by foot. So that was working with the Downtown Business Association to try to leave that sidewalk open as long as possible. And then at some point, we will have to delete that access, but we will be working with them to make sure that we try to do that as short of disruption as possible.
Okay, Councillor Vroba.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Michael. I was just wondering, just to clarify, will there at any time be businesses on 4th Street that have zero access to their customers? Have we minimized that risk?
We've minimized that risk. There's one or two cases where they don't have suitable back entrance to allow total access. And in those cases, we've been working with them to modify access to get into the business through another means. So the goal is that at all times, they will have access to their business or place of residence, whether that's from the front or the back entrance, or if we have to modify through an alternate back entrance through, in one case, through an interior wall.
Okay. No, that's good. I just wanted to make sure that we, when we talked before, you had said there was lots of different ways that we could make it happen.
Yep.
And so, yeah, we've put our trust in you, and I think that's smart.
Doing what we can. So.
Thank you.
And if, yeah, thank you. So, and if, if something does come up, we're open to modifying access, make sure that it works. So I would just encourage anyone that is, you know, having issues or concerns, contact us, and we'll do our best to accommodate.
Okay. Yeah, you know, Michael, you wouldn't get here without getting your picture taken.
Second, I'll, like, there we go.
Talked like crazy.
Showing again, hey?
Engineers aren't used to getting pictures taken.
Exactly. They're usually seed running from the seed, right? Right? Councillor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. Not actually a question towards Michael. It's just an update that we do have a spot on our website now on the city page for downtown revitalization. Just frequently ask questions and information about the page. There's going to be a project update, I believe, every couple weeks. So if everyone just wants to take a look at that, if they have any questions or concerns over.
Yeah, thank you for that, Councillor Ford. Okay, so not seeing any more questions or comments. Thank you so much, Michael. And we'll move on, and you're more than welcome to stay. And enjoy the meeting.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have from Unicode, the building official appointments. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Thank you. Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Sernick, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have from the Rotary Club Lobster Fest Events Permit, June 21st. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Thank you. Councillor Waliser, seconded by Councillor Vroba, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Estevan Public Library, the minutes of April 16th. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that? Thank you. Councillor Vroba, seconded by Councillor Sernick, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Estevan Art Gallery and Museum, the minutes of February 24th. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that? Thank you. Councillor Ford, seconded by Councillor Clark, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, we have a nice report from the Estevan Police Service, their quarterly report. Hopefully, everyone's had the opportunity to go over that. If you had any questions or comments, I can try to answer them. If not, if we can get a motion for that, we'll move on. Thank you. Councillor Frank?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, and I just wanted to say thank you to Police Chief and to the board for putting this together. I've had questions many times over the years of different things, and obviously, there's some confidential nature to the police board, which is obviously important, given the work. But being able to just share what details we can and just be as transparent as we can, it's just been, it's really appreciated. So I thank, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. Thank you. We got a second or Councillor Vroba?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to also echo what Councillor Frank just said, because what's interesting with this, too, is you can actually see the drug stats, the different types of drugs that are on, but also the impaired driving, and also the impaired driving by cannabis, which is disheartening to see that our community still has that. You would hope that people would find an alternative ride if they're deciding to drink and drive or get high and drive. But the other thing that was interesting, too, was even the training, the fact that we are still continually making sure that our police force is having the higher education and the training needed to keep all their skills fresh, I think is very impressive. So job well done. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. We'll pass that on. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, under Executive Reports, we have from the city clerk. And the city clerk's been working hard on this as amended, so hopefully, council has had the opportunity to go over this. And any comments or suggestions or feedback, please go ahead. Councillor Vroba?
Thank you, worship. I'll make the motion to accept and approve this report. Yeah, I think you basically got everything in there that we had asked. I think it's came back to council exactly three times, and we all had different things to input every time. And so thank you to the city clerk for making sure that she got all of that, and it's in there. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Have we got a second? Thank you, Councillor Waliser. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Executive Reports, we have from the Water Services Manager, the Water Quality Report for April 24th. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Thank you. Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Ford. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Executive Reports, we have the Building Permit Report for April. Could we have a motion, please, to accept that report? Thank you, Councillor Sernick, seconded by Councillor Ford. Thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Introduction of Bylaws, we've got a few this evening. We will be looking at giving first reading to four of them, and then, of course, advertising, as we usually do, for a few weeks, and let our citizenry go over it. So first of all, Bylaw 2024-2079, Bylaw to Fix the Rate of Taxation, First Rating. Could we have a motion for that, please? Thank you, Councillor Ford, seconded by Councillor Frank. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Introduction of Bylaws, we have Bylaw 2024-2080, to Provide for Health Levy First Reading. And I would like to say, and I know a few members of council had brought this up before, thank you, Councillor Frank, this money, the $100,000, will be going toward the new MRI machine. Correct?
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, I actually had, we mentioned, we were going to mention that last week, and we both forgot. And then I forgot again this week, but now I see this. This is the perfect time to say that. So that is great, that's great news. So thank you for remembering that, because.
Absolutely, thank you.
So, yeah, that's, that's something that I think is wonderful to see, and we all want the MRI to happen. So it's great that the city of Estevan can be putting the money we already put towards the hospital foundation, towards that specific item. So.
Absolutely.
We can make that a reality. So I'd make that motion.
Okay, thank you. And I'd let Lori know, and she was fine with that. So have we got a second? Thank you, Councillor Ford. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Introductions of Bylaw, we have Bylaw 2024-2081, Bylaw to Provide for the Library Levy. Here again, First Reading. Thank you, Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Waliser. Any questions or comments? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. And go ahead, Councillor.
Sorry, worship. As I own a property in the business improvement district, I'm going to call a conflict of interest for this next one.
Okay, let it be noted that Councillor Frank has left council chambers, please. City clerk? Thank you. No problem. Under Introduction of Bylaws, our last this evening will be Bylaw 2024-2082, Bylaw to Provide for Bid Levy, Bid Levy First Reading. So do we have a motion for that? Thank you. Councillor Sernick, seconded by Councillor Vroba. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Trudy, would you mind letting Councillor Frank back in, please? Thank you. City clerk, let it be noted that Councillor Frank is back in council chambers. Okay, next, this evening, under Public Hearings and Reports, we have none this evening. Giving Notice, we have Invisions Counseling. Thank you so much, ladies. Did you want to step up to the mic and maybe say a few words? We've got the Proclamation, Victims and Survivors of Crime Week, May 12th to 18th. And Laura, you're going to present that. Did you want to speak to that, please?
I'll actually be presenting. My name is Linda Rideout. So thank you for having us here tonight. We are thankful and honored to have the opportunity to be a pillar of support across Southeast Saskatchewan for 30 years. And with that, we are celebrating our 30th anniversary alongside Victims and Survivors of Crime Week. During the month of May, we will also be hosting an open house at our Estevan office on Friday, May 24th, from 10:00 a.m. until noon. We are welcoming residents of the community and other support workers to come out and tour our location and meet our team, get to know a little bit more about the services that we provide.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Any questions or comments of Laura this evening while she's here? You ladies are doing a great job.
Thank you.
We just wanted to let you know that, and we appreciate all of the positive things that you're doing for our community.
Thank you so much.
Job well done. Councillor Vroba, did that raise a question?
It did. I just wanted to say, Invisions is also a part of the Community Wellness Committee that we have now, that we've established through the Community Safety and Wellness Pilot Project that we did. So thank you very much for being involved in that, because it's greatly appreciated. You're going to be a huge asset.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a very important part of our community, and thank you so much for joining in and contributing. Much appreciated. Okay, could I have a motion, please, for the proclamation? And then I will read that off. Thank you. Councillor Waliser, seconded by Councillor Ford. Proclamation, Victims and Survivors of Crime Week. Whereas, Invision Counseling and Support Center Incorporated has been providing therapeutic counseling and support services all across Southeast Saskatchewan to those who have been impacted by crime and abuse in their lives, as well as to individuals, children, couples, and families who are going through a difficult situation or event. Invision Counseling and Support Center Incorporated is celebrating their 30th anniversary alongside victims and survivors of Crime Week. Whereas, in 2022, Saskatchewan had one of the highest provincial rates of police-reported family violence and intimate partner violence, similar to police-reported crime overall. Whereas, Invision Counseling and Support Center Incorporated would like to recognize and honor the individuals who have been impacted by violence and crime in their lives, and also those who support these individuals as they experience and move forward from their traumas. Be it therefore resolved, I, Roy Ledwig, Mayor of the City of Estevan and the Province of Saskatchewan, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th to May 18th, 2024, on the occasion of the 30th anniversary of Invision Counseling and Support Center Incorporated as Victims and Survivors of Crime Week, and urge all citizens of Estevan to recognize this week. And thank you so much, ladies, again. Much appreciated for coming and for all of the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if you wanted a copy of this, maybe, or if you did, okay. And we keep one, I imagine, city clerk? Okay, thank you. And again, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the evening. I haven't had anyone take me up on that, except Michael. But we pay him, so he's on the payroll. So maybe that might have, that might have something to do with it. Thank you, ladies. Good day. Okay, also, under Giving Notice, we have an exciting time of year, which is Clean Sweep, May 13th to 20th. So Monday, our city crews will be clean-sweeping the north, east, south, and west entrances of the city in outlying areas. Tuesday, May 14th, we will be clean-sweeping all city-owned properties, including green spaces such as boulevards, medians, parks, and natural areas. Wednesday, May 15th, we'll do the north. The city crews will be helping you clean-sweep by picking up your contained organic waste material, twigs, leaves, and yard refuse in your front driveway. Branches must be bundled in three-foot lengths, and leaves and yard refuse must be bagged. All items must be on your driveway before 8:00 a.m. So you might want to do it in the evening and have it all tickety-boo for the morning. On May 15th, callbacks will not happen. So see the online map. If you have any questions, please. Thursday, May 16th, we'll do the south. City of Estevan crews will be helping you clean-sweep by picking up your contained organic waste material, twigs, leaves, and yard refuse in your front driveway. Branches must be bundled in three-foot lengths. Leaves and yard refuse must be bagged. All items on your driveway, again, before 8:00 a.m. on May 16th. And then on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, we have the Free Landfill Weekend, which everyone enjoys and likes to take advantage of. So that will be all City of Estevan residents and their residential waste only. Your ID will be required. The free-on appliances and hazardous waste material will not be accepted. Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Reminders, commercial properties will not be included in the free landfill. Also, you must be a resident of Estevan, and proof of residency will be required, driver's license, et cetera, something with the Estevan address. Items that can be dropped off for free include furniture, grass clippings, tree branches, regular household garbage, including appliances, excluding all refrigerators, freezers, air conditioners, mattresses, and box springs, as well as all hazardous materials are not accepted. And any waste from rural customers, sorry to our rural friends, but this is one time when we can't allow you to enjoy the fruits of what our citizens of Estevan enjoy. Please note, according to Bylaw 96-148912, all loads must be completely covered or secured to prevent littering while in transport to the landfill. And we actually have one or two residents in our community that like to follow people around and bring it to their attention if they don't have their loads covered. Okay, so that's all I have. Any extra comments from members of council? Councillor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I just actually had a question as I was walking out the door today. The branches that need to be bundled, are they, you're allowed to keep the leaves on them, correct?
Yes.
Okay, there was some neighbors cutting some trees, and they asked, and I said, do we have to de-leaf them? I was like, I don't think so, but I said a check.
Just three feet. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Oh, Councillor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. Just, the business improvement district downtown has gone out to start cleaning up the back alleys and doing some work. And they've been painting and doing things, and it just really does set a good tone for the city. When you, when you're out there cleaning, and you, you can make a difference by, by just taking care of your, your property, it just makes you feel better about your community. So I just hope everybody can take the time to spend a little bit on their, on their properties and make them better, and I think it's good for the community. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. It's a good opportunity for everyone to clean up all of their properties. Thank you for that. Okay, next, motions from committee. We have the Research Collaboration Agreement for Development of Small Modular Reactors. We've been working on this for a while. Our contribution is work in kind. The rest of the partners are all around $10,000, so they led us off lightly. Could we have a motion, please, to accept this agreement? Could we have a motion, please, to accept this agreement for the development of small modular reactors? Councilor Ford?
I just actually have a question. Have they indicated what the working kind would be?
Well, they interviewed me, they said that was part of it for about half an hour, so we got off lightly.
It's $5,000 worth of an interview.
If they only want to ask for a few more interviews, we're getting off pretty good.
Okay, I just, I just would really like to have identified what the working kind is before we move forward with this, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, well, we can hold it until the next meeting, although I told them we'd probably sign it today or tomorrow. I don't think it's anything untoward, whatever the work will be, there's no money involved, so I think we can trust that it's nothing to orders. Any other questions? Council Vrova?
Just to clarify, it's not an open-ended working kind, it's a $5,000...
No, no, $5,000 worth.
Right, and so we would still have final say. If they asked us for something that we could not provide, then we would say no...
Exactly.
And we would not exceed $5,000 in working kind.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, Council Clark?
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak in favor of this, and I'll put the motion. On the floor, Your Worship, I, I think that it's our future, and it's probably where we're going here. I think we've heard some comments from the government, and I think for us to say that, that we want to be part of that, I think that's, that's where we are today, and I think we've agreed that's one of the directions that this community is going to follow, so I'll put that motion.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council Clark. I couldn't agree more. We've been working on this nuclear file for a number of years. We've been going to the yearly Nuclear Conference in Ottawa, so we have been getting involved. We've been involved in a lot of the open sessions that SAS Power have been involved with. We've been supporting all of those, and I, too, agree. I believe that is our future and will help our community long-term, absolutely. Have we got a second or? Council Cernic? Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, next, under consideration of bylaws, we have none this evening. Inquiries, Council Vrova?
Thank you, Worship. First, I just wanted to mention Deputy Chief Merkel is also on our Wellness, Community Wellness Committee, and something we didn't highlight in the police report was actually how many calls our police department gets for mental health calls, and, like it says, 51 in quarter one for mental health emergencies. The PAC team was deployed 35 times, and they also do client follow-ups and the wellbeing checks. So I just want to recognize how much our police department locally puts in to try and making sure that people in our community who are struggling with mental health or have those kind of family emergencies, they're just there for them, and so I think that's really important to point out. Also, Women of Distinction Awards was held, and we attended, I attended that, and that was really good to see all the people that were there, it was a packed house. Also...
A few men also attended, Council Vrova.
Yes. There was actually quite a few men, which is very impressive to see, too.
See, there you go.
Yes.
I was there supporting our ladies off council.
You did, yes. I thought that was very good that you came, because you usually do come, so that was good. The other thing is, I had an inquiry about parking lot signs that are put into the parking lots that are behind the Toronto Dominion Bank and across from Pharmisave, and it was just a question about why we're restricting parking spaces while we're doing the downtown revitalization. So I just thought if we could maybe make sure that we just get the word out, because I know we have a reason for that, and it's to make sure that the Downtown Business Association people, their staff, are having parking spots, I believe, and also the people that live down there, without taking away parking spots from the people trying to shop downtown. So there was just a little bit of concern there, but I think, again, as Council Ford said earlier, we have the website, and through making sure we have all the information out there for people, we'll be able to educate. Another concern that came in was summer students working on a Saturday. Somebody asked me if they work now, cutting grass on Saturdays, and I said, "Well, the season just got started, maybe we want to get ahead of it." But if we are working on Saturdays, I think we probably are just making sure that the work is getting done, so that was just an inquiry. And then the other one was an inquiry regarding Lind Crescent, and that we had not gone back and refurbished the lawns that were done on that project. So I drove down there, and the only lawns that seemed to not be completed in a nice, like, green area were these housing projects. There's four, I believe, but I also noticed those seem empty. So I thought if we could maybe somehow reach out to housing to find out why we have so many empty units, when there seems to be a lot of people that seem to be looking for affordable housing, that it seems odd to me that we have empty units, so, yeah. Anyways, I'm sure we would know if somebody was complaining. The person who had the concern about Lind Crescent and the lawns was not somebody that actually lived down there, so I would be curious just to see if someone who actually lives down there, or if the Housing Board itself had actually inquired, because we may be, as a city, already planted the grass there, but if it didn't get watered or it wasn't maintained, then it maybe didn't take. So there's probably a lot of variables involved there, but, yeah, my bigger question is why we have all four of those buildings that are located down there empty.
Okay, we can check into that, and also with the police, probably over 60% of the repeat calls are mental health-related. It's unfortunate, that's just the way it is.
And Deputy Chief did actually talk about that at our last coffee talk, where we talked about this, and he said the PAC team is so important, because it is actually a qualified social worker, mental health social worker, that goes with the police officer, and the police officer pretty much just is, you know, he's there for the legal side of things, but then the social worker is the one handling the actual mental health crisis. So I just think that's so important that our community has that, and it's important to recognize it.
Yeah, it's been a very useful tool, and I think you'll find, I believe there's only three or four in the province, I think you'll find that that program that has been so successful will be expanded. And as far as the students, I know sometime, depending on where they're working or whatever, they'll start like at 4:00 in the morning to avoid the heat of the day, and then be done earlier, but as far as working the weekend, I'm sure there's a good reason, because with the rain, the two inches of rain, we did fall behind, so that's probably part of it.
Yeah, I actually said it may be the rain, or it could possibly be with the way they started their schedule. If they came in, you know, with leaving university and they came in late, they maybe needed to get their hours in that week, and because of the rain, we were able to accommodate, so... I said, "I'm sure it's not a normal thing," and I very highly doubted it was an overtime thing, which I think was the bigger concern, but at the end of the day, if the job's getting done, then the summer students are happy.
Absolutely. Okay, Council Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to say that the, the museum is starting a fundraiser to get the old train from the coal mine painted, and they're looking for support from the community. I think it's, it would be great to have that fixed up as the entrance to the city. It's starting to look a little weathered, and I know they've sent some letters out, but they're looking for support, and hopefully the community will step up for that. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you. Council Waliser?
Thank you, Your Worship. I wanted to congratulate the Family Resource Center on their successful Tim Hortons Smile Cookie Campaign. They were able to raise over $46,000. That's going to go back into the community for kids programming from zero through age 11, so that is spectacular feat for them with community support, so thank you to everybody that participated. And then also to highlight that the Radio-Thon for Life this year is also attached to the MRI fundraiser, and so they'll be having a barbecue for both lunch and supper. If you want to phone different friends and eat out twice that day, it's happening on June 5th from 7:00 to 7:00.
Okay, thank you for, for that, Council Waliser, and we'd also like to thank Tim Hortons, who with that cookie campaign do a tremendous amount of good in the community. Thank you. Council Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. This past Friday, on the 10th, we hosted the Tech, at the Tech Hub, the second anniversary event. It went way better than we could have ever imagined. The place was packed, you couldn't even stand or sit, because there were so many people in there, and I just want to thank Council Cernic and Council Clark for letting me twist their arms and barbecuing for us that day. I don't really know if I gave them a choice, but they showed up, so it was awesome.
Absolutely. I think they both got second-degree burns, but thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
I'll bring you some aloe next time. And then just to note, Moosehide Campaign Day is on May 16th, which is an Indigenous-led grassroots movement to engage men and boys in violence towards women and children. It's grown into a very big national campaign over the last 10 years, and it fits very well with Invision's proclamation this week.
Okay, thank you. And I did an interview for that, and as a result, I've got each of you a moose pin to wear, which I will give you after the meeting. You'll have to wait till then with bated breath, okay? Council Cernic?
Thankfully, you said "pin" after the moose hair. But I have nothing this week.
Okay, thank you. Council Frank?
Nothing this evening, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Nothing yet, Your Worship.
Okay, city treasurer?
Nothing, Your Worship.
City clerk?
Nothing, Your Worship.
Okay. With that, do we have a motion to move into committee? I guess first we should stand adjourned and then move into committee, but there we go. Council Vrova, seconded by Council Ford, ready for the question, all in favor? Carried. Thank you so much. We stand adjourned. Good night.